Thank you, everyone. We're going to call to order at 7:04 this special joint meeting of the Town and County Council with the Commission on People with Disabilities and Talling Green Historic District. Before we go into the study, I just want to first start out saying that this is obviously a very lengthy discussion for multiple meetings. Everybody from each group speaks and keep an open mind. We are respectful of each other and understand one another's perspectives. And then as a housekeeping order, for anyone that's here from the Commission or the Commission on People with Disabilities or the Historic Green District, if you can just raise your hand and as I go around identify yourself for our clerks so that they can that they can track ideally who's speaking at each time. We'll start with the council and we'll start with the public and then if anybody from either commissions on Zoom will point them out to introduce themselves. So I guess I'll start left to right with Councilman Murray.
We're just introducing ourselves?
Yeah.
Katie Murray.
I'm going to call John Lee again.
Pete Jones.
Kathy Nunez.
Lou Lubin.
Holly Nunez.
Go ahead, Jerry.
I don't know where you want to go.
Oh, yeah. Oh, sorry. Studio.
And then run that.
I have the other on the Commission on People with Disabilities.
Emily Valde, Human Service Director.
Susan Loos, Accused.
Or he was.
David Porter.
Lisa Hancock, Leader of Fun and Records.
Kim Little, Commission on People with Disabilities.
Jonathan, Commission on People with Disabilities.
Scott Lafferty, Republican Works.
Jody Coleman, Marzi Allen, Chair of the Historic Green District.
Michael McGee, Historic District Commission.
Thank you. And then I think I saw Kathy Buck, if you were on, if you're still on, want to identify yourself? They're going to the screen also might be a little bit, but Kathy Buck is also here from Historic District. And I believe that is everyone. Please let me know if I'm missing anybody that's online. All right, seeing none, we'll dive right into the discussion of the Historic District, the Historic Stone Walkway Study, TIO Design, FHI Studio. So I guess actually you want to come to the front chair here and you can introduce yourself again and talk about the study and go through that before we get into the discussion.
All right, thank you. Good evening. My name is Stowe Barlow, the Landscapes Architect, FHI Studio. FHI Studio are planners, landscapers, architects, and scientists. So a lot of my work involves work on historic properties. Presently, we're working on several national register properties, including the Heritage Stone House and this. So we're engaged, as you know, to take a look at the at the walkways and make some possible recommendations as how could be to be resolved. So over the period, I think about the first year we're engaged. In April, we met by Zoom with the Commission on People with Disabilities and also the Historic District Commission. Got some great input, had great discussions and went on from there to the bench report. So we can just run through this.
Is that it?
Yes, it is. Yeah. Okay, so this got some information in the beginning. What makes an accessible walk? It's very strict standards, as you know. Yeah, you can have a maximum of one quarter inch vertical, half inch horizontal. Surface must be firm, stable, and slip resistant, which should be four feet. Slope is very critical, 2% cross slope, that's across the walk, and then 5% maximum longitudinal slope to be an ADA compliant walkway. So we looked at the walks along the green and as you know, on Carriage Drive, there's different materials. There's some stone, there's some batuminous asphalt, and there's some concrete walkways. And then on the west side, on 195, that's predominantly historic stone blocks that we believe were installed in the late 1800s. So we came up with several options from the two group meetings and some input from myself. Now I can just run through those. I think there's six of them. First one.
Yeah, they're in kind of an empty order. Would you like me to give you these?
Sure. Okay, but that's the order. You can just go to the next slide.
Okay.
So just some photos of the existing conditions. Again, everybody knows what they are. This is some of the concrete walks, which are in pretty good shape. Parts of the asphalt walks on Carriage Drive are in worse shape. And then the stone walkways, Gauntly 195. They vary. Some are in pretty good shape, some are cracked and heaved and disheveled. There's pawning issues. Certainly varying conditions and some of them are tougher than others. Okay, so just going through some different options that we've been talking about and that came up in the discussions. And I should say too that I may show an image, say, this is on the west side, but it would also apply to the east side. Right? So just because the photo shows the west side, all these solutions I think could work on either side. So the first idea is to build a new walkway and keep the existing stone in place. So the new walkway would be adjacent. That would work out very well on the west side. And then there's and that there's a wide separation, could be a wide separation between the two, so it wouldn't look so awkward, I guess. I'll point out too that on the west side, most of the stone walks up to the curve are on private property. So the idea here is that the new walks, at least on the west side, would be built on town property. So you have a two-walk system, you'd have your town walk, and then you'd also have the private walkways that are now. This is same idea, but with stone, and it could be a more historic stone too, of course. Could be stone dust. Now, stone dust is is a looser material. You may or may not know, stone dust, it can be compacted. I think in your comments, the BPW director commented that it would be very hard to maintain in the winter. I agree, it would be hard to maintain in any case. It can be an accessible walkway if it's highly maintained, but it does take a lot of. And then the idea came up to put a stone dust section adjacent to the stone rocks with the idea that someone that needed more, had mobility problems, or needed a firmer, more stable surface, could walk on that two to three foot, which would be on the side. Of course, we could repair and adjust the historic walks and stay with that. That's been suggested and talked about. The consensus seems to be that we could make those certainly much more accessible, much smoother, much less of an obstacle for people with mobility problems. And then the last idea, this one would pertain just to Carriage Drive, but to dedicate a portion of the roadway as a walkway, and that could be delineated with flexible ballers, it could be delineated with paint, any number of ways. And that would keep keep the stone, concrete, asphalt mix in place. And I should say too that on Carriage Drive, those walks are in the right way for the most part. So those are not all private property. And then we came up with some estimated cost. And as you might expect, you know, the stone is certainly the highest. And then the stone dust would be the lowest cost. Yeah.
Well, thank you. Just that, you know, opened the floor to counselors, anyone from the commissions. If they'd like to ask any questions or having to shift their comments.
Councilor Lubin? Thank you, Mr. Chair. So one question I have you, you're referring to the property as far as on Route 74, that from the current current walkway, current sidewalk to the street, as that's private property area as well?
Yeah, we're working from the DOT mapping, which shows the right of way. They do make the caveat that it's approximate. Okay, so but it's certainly, you know, it's well within that area for the most part, about two thirds of the way. So it certainly appears to be on private property.
Because isn't there, my understanding is that there's actually a right of way that the DOT actually has as well that comes onto that property. Is that accurate?
I don't think so. I think, you know, the DOT right of way goes to the property line. And then it's private property.
Okay, but so while we're, the sidewalk is located at this at this current time, that's is that considered then town property still, or is that?
On 74, it appears it appears to be on private property.
On private property.
Yeah, until you get until you get north, approximately where the road curves, it crosses over there at that point. Again, and this all according to the DOT maps, DOT right of way maps.
Okay, so if there was going to be any type of instruction, any type of work done at all on any of the on any of the walkways, either lifting up the stone and and, you know, trying to make it ADA compliant or anything else, essentially would either have to work in conjunction with the with the property owners or try and pursue some type of eminent domain or other other type of activity to to put in those walkways. Is that accurate?
I would assume that is right.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all I have to do.
Helping you to get some questions or comments next?
Yes, I want to follow up on what he just said. Make sure I hear this correctly.
Sure.
So the existing walks on 74 are currently on private land.
For the most part.
Right, for the most part. Technically, 74 is a state road, so I think if we wanted to put an adjacent lot, the sidewalk in, would we would have to work with the state to get permission to do that, right?
You would.
They have
Right.
the right of way from how many feet in, and the new the new walkway would be on what is deemed the state property.
Correct.
But it would be maintained by the town.
That would not be a question for me, but I assume it would, yeah.
Okay. All right.
Typically the way.
That's what I would, that's what I would figure.
Yeah.
And I guess that was my question for us here is right now, I'm not sure where the responsibility lies. And Scott might know, who maintains those sidewalks now because they're on private residence? So I believe the residents have to maintain those sidewalks from a shoveling or anything else perspective, correct? So if we were to add an adjacent sidewalk, that would then be town's responsibility to clear that sidewalk, correct?
Didn't you say in your remarks that you don't maintain those now?
They don't.
No.
No, right, that goes on the private property. So we would need, in that case, I believe, permission from the state to add the adjacent walk, and then the town would have to assume maintenance of it. And how, I don't know if you would know or Scott would know, how would that work with the corner down there where the budding lines are so close? So the historic sidewalk is pretty close to the roadway, and I think that crosses over between state property and private.
It appears so. Yeah, it's more a leg issue that would have to be worked out, certainly.
So.
I mean, I think I think at that point, it would be into eminent domain or an agreement with the property owner.
Okay, and from the perspective of your adjacent walks, are they parallel to a certain point where then they then cross over? Would that be how you would see?
I don't think they have to have to cross over, you know, they would.
Narrow down, right? So.
They would get much closer.
Right. And at that point, when we hit that that interjection, that intersection there between the two,
Yeah.
we would have to find a way to maybe do something with the existing stone that's there rather than, I would assume.
Yeah, it gets it gets sticky.
Right. Right, but that's, I think it's a fairly short area that that kind of crosses over into that.
That's again, that's what it appears, the information that we have. Yeah, I mean, certainly if you're moving forward, you have to get that line established. Okay, with the surveyor.
All right, I think those are my main questions for this. I'm not quite sure how you want to handle, how we handle kind of like debating the different options.
Yeah, I think in general, it was going to be just an open discussion to start, and then we kind of drill down into each option. You can have to discussion between Scott or Lisa or Ben or anybody, but I didn't want to open it up to any members. There's no other counselors that have any questions right away.
Yeah.
Um. I think some of my questions are more large picture about what the outcome is that we're looking for. Because I think that there are some interesting options here. I think that these are interesting things to pursue, but there's a lot going on here, right? Lou and Tammy brought up some, you know, pretty big issues. And my question is what is what is the outcome that we're looking for?
I mean, from my perspective, I think the outcome, at least what brought the impetus of this issue is that there are concerns about accessibility and safe accessibility on the green for all residents, regardless of their ability to traverse the green, get to various places, and to kind of experience the green in the same way people that maybe aren't more able to do so currently. That's at least my my interpretation.
That's, thank you, because that's very succinct. What is the green? By what you just explained, what what area are we talking about here?
Well, certainly, I would talk to a zoning perspective, but I'm sure Historic District has its own parameters and barriers. I don't know if Scott or Lisa might be able to clarify, at least that there's a strict barrier or boundaries that you kind of know about in terms of the various zones. Or, you know, sorry, David, no, David, I'm not, yes.
Yeah, so the Historic District is intended to be extended from roughly Snyderville there on the south side of the side of the neighborhood up to just beyond my Catherine Bridge. And then the other port goes not quite to the post office, but a few hundred feet.
So is our goal then as a town to have that entire stretch, including the it's forked in some places, accessible? Are we, are there priorities in that? And maybe that's a better question for the Commission People with Disabilities. What you guys brought this ask to us, so could you be more specific about the ask?
So I'll speak up as Susan Loos, accused. I think along it, we we echo what Mr. Jones has said in that we would like to see the sidewalks on the green safer, for one. There, I think there have been broken bones, not in relation to people with disabilities, but certainly someone in a wheelchair or a walker or visually impaired has great difficulty maneuvering from one place to another on a green using those sidewalks. You know, a phased approach is perfectly acceptable, if not desirable, because I think that would allow us to sort of see what's most important. And maybe it's been brought up in the past, although, you know, it might not be a popular opinion, just mine. We might get away with just doing one side or the other and allowing, because basically acceptability strives for the shortest, most direct route between two points. So, you know, if you map out what the most important points are around the green, you know, there are certain ways to get around doing the whole entire thing. So that's that's my position. I don't know.
This is Miranda. I did think most the priority would be more around where the museums are, the this block, basically, where the town hall is down to like the Talmud Inn. And then on the other side, from the art center down to the jailhouse area. There's other parts that definitely need it and aren't considered part of the Historic District. But to me, from my own walking and trying not to trip over, you know, upheaval sidewalk, that and that's the area that I would think visitors and town people who want to enjoy the Hicks Museum, for instance, and that sort of thing would have trouble. And and not just people with disabilities, but senior citizens, even children, probably. That's just my.
I think that's very helpful. Thank you. I think that helps me understand a little bit better what what we're talking about and okay, I think that's a great start. Thank you.
Have any other counselors with questions or follow ups?
Yes, if I may, Mr. Chair, thank you. That's great points that Councilman Murray brought up, and I'd like to sort of follow up with that. As far as for the estimates, where you have the estimates that are here, is that just for the sides? Because I know that the one, the one that you have, which is presented as the, what is it, the adjacent stone walk? So it goes basically from Town Hall down to the post office that along that area. That is that adjacent stone walk, the price that that you gave us, the estimate for the stone walk, which is $425,000 to $500,000? $420,000 to $500,000. Is that just for this one side? That's both side?
Yeah. Okay. I just took it to the curve. I'll call it the curve in the road. It didn't go all the way down. I think the post office.
Okay.
Yeah, it goes like right, just right after the Talmud Inn area.
And then and then on the opposite side on Carriage Drive, that encompasses Carriage Drive as well, and what distance on there?
Right up to the end of the actual green.
Okay, so basically from the corner of where the green is here, by the flagpole down to the red and white, essentially?
Well, a little bit past red and white, yeah. And a little caveat, those prices are just, you know, kind of very, very general.
We wait another month and it could be $1 million. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. That that helps.
And then help me to follow up as well?
Yeah, a follow up to that, what you just said. I can see it from your designs on this side. I'm curious on how like the concrete adjacent walk works on the other side. It's a much smaller.
Yeah, I mean, it would be awkward.
Yeah.
It'd be like right up next to it or just separate by a few feet. It wouldn't, you know, elegant is not the right word. It wouldn't be an.
So we're going to have to do a combination of things if we really wanted to think about accessibility from that perspective and.
Right, because you have sections of the concrete walk on
You do.
on that side, it's pretty good shape, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so that the batuminous wants to be replaced anyway, because that's in pretty bad shape.
I just had a question. So Susan, so are you concerned at all by St. Matthews coming down? Or just the walk, not just, but the walkway coming? Everything on this side. If you look at the math that that just gave me, that everything in brown is Historic District. So it's, it goes all the way to, it goes past downhill road, all the way past St. Matthews. So again, phased approach, because, you know, those sidewalks, so I live right next to St. Matthews, just so everybody's clear. I see what happened. People park in St. Matthews and there's not a lot of parking on the green. So whenever there's an event at the museums or the Arts of Talmud, or when they used to have the farmer's market, there would be parking at St. Matthews and people would walk. And, you know, so those sidewalks are used. They're not, I don't think it's, you wouldn't call them historic, and they're not in great shape because they've never been maintained. But do they need to be fixed first? No, I don't think so, in my opinion. So, you know, again, taking a phased approach and looking at what's most important to get to allow people, everyone, to get around the green, like Miranda says, to the places that are most heavily attended or used would probably be the best way to start, I would think. Okay, just wanted to clarify that. I mean, St. Matthews is definitely, you know, there are issues with the crosswalk there, not marked. Doesn't go into a I don't even think you can call it safe, never mind ADA compliant, goes into kind of a hole across the street and then takes the hard right, and then those sidewalks are all broken up. But people do it, strollers, kids, dogs, you know, cringe, but I haven't seen anything terrible happen yet, but that's that's main, one of the main reasons that we're here. It's revolting. I think the man carrying a wheelchair driving in the on the shoulder because he cannot drive his chair on the sidewalk, shoulders. And I is it okay? I'm sorry.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, that was it. I'm sorry. I know in discussions with Chief Leitel on a totally different topic, he pulled the fire truck out onto the carriage road as a little show and tell demonstration to me. And he has concerns about the 20-foot width of Carriage Road. Because we were talking about access behind Burrow Road, which is also 20 feet wide. I I don't know if the chief has had an opportunity to give any input about the possibility of dedicating some of the Carriage Road to be a sidewalk. From my previous conversation with him, again, about a completely different topic, I would think that he would have some contributions to this conversation. I don't know if he's had the opportunity to do that yet.
Not to my knowledge, but the feedback off of that, of Scott being here, I'd probably just ask, would you have concerns in terms of plowing and snow maintenance? With that kind of option of having the accessible walkway on the Carriage Drive? That either takes out some of the parking in in front of the buildings or?
It's probably one of the bigger concerns. A lot of people park up there with farmer markets. They've done some degree. That's where a lot of them park first, and the overflow goes to St. Matthews or come digging up here in Town Hall. As far as plowing, particularly some of the road, it'd make it easier for us, but we're going to fill the sidewalk. The sidewalk will be right on the road. I'm sure the residents will be happy with us dumping the snow there.
Especially because in that case, if it's dumped in anywhere and it ends up on the private sidewalk, then you're basically dumping this snow there for the residents to be responsible for keeping it out versus the town reflection of it. Did you have any?
That's it. That was my question. Thank you.
Counselor Lubin, and then in some way, I do also want to make sure any members of the public from the Commission on People with Disabilities or Historic Districts, or even if you're online, if you want to do like the raise hand function or raise your hand, I'll make a point of acknowledging you. Generally, everybody here is kind of either raising their hand and giving you a nod when they want to speak. So trying to read the room as best I can.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This would go, I guess, to, well, I see Kathy's online right now as well, or any of the representatives from Historic District. Is for the stone that's currently laid throughout the Historic District, when was that laid? I mean, because one of the things that we're looking at is there's a, everyone wants to keep the historic value of the of the green and of the area. If the stone was just laid in like the 1950s, I don't know if that's necessarily going to match the Historic District issue. I mean, you know, may have been there at one point in time, but if it got pulled up or other things like that. So I guess that's really a crucial issue because I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand where we have sections along Carriage Road, where there's stone, there's concrete, there's, you know, asphalt. There's a bunch of different areas where I don't think that, you know, at least from what I know, that concrete's not necessarily historically accurate. So, I mean, I guess Kathy, I could see you raising your hand. Mr. Chair, so I'd like to just hear on that issue as far as when the stone was laid, when, like, when, how can we say that this is historic? I know that bluestone is generally historic, and the stone is generally historic, but when was it laid?
I see Kathy, you're muted, so if you're good to go, if your mic is working, go ahead.
If you can, can you hear me? Because I did take it off.
My mic is actually not working, Kathy. We can't hear you, unfortunately.
Oh, okay. Can you hear me if I take myself?
Hold on, Kathy.
Kathy, we can, we can hear you online, so they just can't hear you in the room.
All right, if I take myself off video, can you hear me? Sometimes that works. Does that work?
It wasn't projecting loud enough. You're good.
All right. All right, no, you can't hear me.
We can hear you.
Oh, okay. Here's the scoop on the on the stone that's granite is the oldest. And it was laid when many of the oldest buildings on the green were erected. So you're looking at the early 1800s, so you're talking 200 years old, some of them 300 years old, as far as the granite is concerned. The bluestone was used to replace and repair where granite was damaged. The concrete was the Hicks family's contribution. In front of their house, they took up the granite, and in front of the Hicks Memorial Building, they put concrete as well because it was a new product in the early 1900s. So they added that concrete in front of their home and in front of the Hicks Memorial Building when that building was erected by their family with their money. And that's when they added those two elements. The batuminous is absolutely new and, as you know, used as some repair and some patch. There are a couple of stones that. Um, there are a couple of stones that I know of that were broken. In, in such bad shape that. Uh, people, I know one in front of the church, in fact, the congregational church, that was replaced with a. Supposedly historic, or at least old piece of granite, that is significantly thick. To re- repair and replace um, a piece that was broken badly. But otherwise, they are old, they are old, two to three hundred years old granite. So yes, that is the his- when they say historic walk, they're not making jokes about it, it's a historic walk.
So, is, so those stones, like the, the granite stones that are there, you're saying are, have been there for two to three hundred years?
Yes, depending on where the location is in the, on the green, yes. And then the other thing, if I may, as long as I have the floor and I'll get out of your face, um. As far as traversing the green, and we were, there was talk on the museums. Since I represent three of the four museums in the middle of the green. We have problems with foot traffic, but it's our own foot traffic and it's dealing with the car traffic. Um, it's gotten worse, not better, since the improvements have made to the, to the um, one ninety-five. We have our own parking lots for the most part. We use the town parking behind the courthouse. Um, north-south walking between. The red and white and the jail museum, which is, which is not, you know, it's, it's something people do. Is exacerbated by the way the foot traffic is now supposed to go across the street. Down and back across the street from the jail museum, it's, it's convoluted. Um, and if people don't walk that way, they are not walking correctly and then they take their lives in their hands. Without the stop signs, it's gotten. For pedestrians horrible, has nothing to do with sidewalks, has everything to do with the speed of the cars. And the way they route the pedestrian traffic. Um, it has nothing to do with parking either. We have a significant and sufficient parking. Using our own parking lots and the town parking behind the courthouse, and if we have a big uh, affair, we can also use the church. Parking lot at congregational church, but we yet generally don't need to. But that's all I wanted to mention about parking. And, and, and the problems with, with the speed of cars. And, and it just hasn't worked. Any of that concrete and cobblestone has not, that's not helped.
Thank you.
Thank you for the extra opportunity.
Any other questions to council members or any?
I'm here.
On the town side, on the town hall side, we put a sidewalk, second sidewalk. How? How would you, how would you describe it? I mean, it's a side, sidewalk one, sidewalk two, and then how is it gonna present?
The, the sidewalk on the town hall side?
That's right, the second, uh, there's a two. Proposal is uh, second sidewalk, right? There's a two side. One is historic and one is, one is anymore crap. How is it gonna look? Were, old and new, uh? And is it, the, the new sidewalk is gonna represent the history? Doesn't make sense to me because of what historic, oh, and the news I run. First of all, it doesn't make sense to me.
Are you, are you asking my opinion?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there, there, I think, yeah, he's asking for your input, uh, because obviously the two options that were in here, kind of said. It's at, you know, one satisfied the historic district, one didn't, I think, trying to get some insight into why.
I, I think having two sidewalks really doesn't make sense. I, I um, I. I'm of the opinion that we were. Many people years and years ago. Worked very hard to create a historic district. For the reasons of historic, having a historic district. And the town, first of all, the neighborhood voted to have it, and then the town voted to have it. Yes, we did have somebody fall and break. Um, break a wrist, I think it was, um, I know the woman. Um, but she was power walking on a sidewalk that was not designed to do athletic things on. Um, we have built in this town many places for athletic. Activities. This area is not designed for that. And, and ironically, I had suggested years ago that the council probably should post this as, as historic district. And it, and certain activities probably are not suggested for this area. Um, I feel that we have an opportunity and we realize that I work with historic people who are. Sensitive to having very few. Treasures like we have in the historic green, um, in the historic district. And they're very protective of these treasures. And um, you know, I think we need to think about. What do we do about trying to protect it and trying to? Allow everybody to use it and enjoy it, but to also understand that certain activities, just, I mean. I don't know, I, I wouldn't allow dirt bikes out on the football field. Or on a baseball field, and there are certain activities that just don't happen in certain areas, and I think that that was what. That's what I hear from people when they see or read about some of the activities that people want to do in certain areas of town, and they just don't think it's appropriate. I think we can do some improvements here to make it available to folks. And, but it's not. And still make it available and usable. I mean, our buildings are available and usable. I have, I don't know that we can't make these sidewalks usable for everybody. But I'm not so sure that we have to. Put parallel sidewalks. I, I have to really think hard on that. But I, I think we can have a little of both without having to build two sidewalks, I guess. Um, I had suggested looking at the stone dust. I've seen it done at the Lebanon Green and it's worked well. I'm hearing our town staff is not thinking it's the best solution. They're the guys who have to maintain it, I have to. Kind of tip my hat to them, but I've seen it work in some other areas. I kind of thought that in combination to what we thought might be a possible solution. One thing I do know is that. I have granite sidewalks at my old house. Every thirty or forty or fifty years, you still have to level them. Um, I know our granite sidewalks around the green for anybody's use have to be maintained once in a while. So whether you do it for the people with disabilities. Or the rest of the town, somebody's gonna have to maintain them. For everybody's use, so you're gonna have to put them in the budget anyway, so. Budget for it anyway and decide what other alterations you want to do to make them usable for the, for everybody. I guess that's, that's where I'm coming from on this one at this point. I think that, you know, they, they need some help. For anybody's use. So what do we do to make them available for everybody's use without destroying the district? You don't just let them sink into the ground, nobody lets them sink into the ground. Anywhere. You go to Gettysburg, go to anywhere, they use, they take care of their antiquated sidewalks. They don't, but they aren't, they aren't making them modern. They aren't pouring concrete and taking up the old stones. Is that kind of telling you, you know, I don't want to tell you how to make your decision, but I am saying, go other places and see what they have done. Go to Sturbridge, they haven't, they haven't poured concrete, concrete, that's a close place to go.
Can I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
You know, we've done great, as Kathy said, we've gone through a lot of trouble to try to preserve this area. I mean, where else do you have a courthouse and a jail? All together with a Hickstern uh, museum now, which an attorney used to live in. I mean, this was the Stagecoach Center of Providence, Boston, Hartford. That was, and, and here is a story. And we've done great measures to try to preserve it. It's nationally registered, we really don't get much more than that, and we're in the process. Of actually trying to make, now that we have a designated state scenic road. Of making it either an all-American road or a federal scenic highway. Because it meets all the criteria. And this is by all means a byway, every time there's an accident on the highway, everybody's coming right by you. So this would increase tourism and people are driving slow and they're like, wow, this is a wonderful place, look at this quaint little village. I've been here for three hundred years. And to. Alter its history in any way. I think would just be defeating the purpose of everything that we've already tried to do as far as preservation.
I'm from New York City. And it's been, whenever I go there, there, there's always some changes. Seventh Avenue, doesn't matter what name you do it. They are doing a, they are taking the roadway. And they are making a, either sidewalk or bicycle shop and everything else. So I think we have a perfect. Solution right there. There's a side road. We can divide it into half, half of the traffic, right to the, all the residents, they can. Turn into it and make it right into the, their houses. On other side, you can make it. I mean, divided half of it, just for the people to walk on it or. Wheelchair or whatever it is, like it's very accessible, but they like try to make sure it's uh, very. Much safer for the, for everybody, women was walking and then. I don't know what's beyond that, and Scott would.
I had reached out to Lisa and she was reaching out to David about asking Mr. Barlow what the. A sidewalk would look like on the opposite side of the carriage road, not on the residential side, but a budding the green side. So you already have a granite curb. And then if you were to put a vitunus small curb. To prevent cars, and we have a. I believe it's either cast iron or some kind of very heavy steel, there is one pitching post. In front of the congregational church between the sign and their historic lamp post. It's the only one on the green up there. There's nothing like it. I have a picture in my, in my book. And we could use those as barriers. Such as they have in Hartford. I was in our downtown Hartford right now, right across the street from the science center, they have these barriers like that. Our high school has barriers, they're concrete, so obviously we wouldn't want to put that there, but they're very historic. They uh, match a little bit of the historic style lamp posts we put on the green. Um, so they would definitely be in keeping and historically appropriate.
Did you find?
And um, we've talked to a lot of the residents on the carriage road and their concern is the traffic and the speeding. The speeding, and not to mention, two days ago, we had a tractor trailer truck drive right across the whole green. He came around the corner here, tried to blow a U-turn. Couldn't, he had two wheels on one side on Talon Green Road right in front of my house. He had two wheels on the other side of the green, almost hitting Mr. Hertex's car. Jack night, at five fifteen in the morning on Tuesday morning, and he. I don't know how he ended up like that, I just heard the air brakes and banging, I thought he was gonna hit my car. And he just drove right over the green and had to go halfway down it. Did you see those tire marks when you were doing the mower? Probably. Yeah, and that was the second time in one week that this happened, so that would also.
Jody, that's turning on to where you are, right?
Yes. But then they tried to do a U-turn on the carriage road. And I ran out and talked to somebody. Monday night and said, don't even try to turn here, you're gonna take out my mailbox and hit my car and run over my lilies. Go up to the Saint Matthews and do a U-turn up there. Or they can go straight up to Dunhill, take a lap, go through Saint Matthews and come back down. If they're going the wrong way, because for some reason, I think GPS still shows the carriage road as an alternate. Or something, because the heat, they were looking at their phone like they're looking at a map. So somebody has to update Google. Or something, or I don't know if they have like an eighteen wheeler map or, or something, but that. Two times in the same week, so.
So just before we jump over, I just want to make sure your counsel, if you're all set with your questions or if you have any additional input. You're good, all right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, if there's any additional input. You'd like to give additional, I get too off rails, I'm sure everybody has a chance to speak, so now, if there's additional commentary. Any of counselor comments, questions you'd like to add on, that's also fine.
I didn't really have a question, I just wanted to add to uh, that. You know, our commission on people with disabilities has formed a position on preferring any. Particular option, but I can speak for myself, and I agree with uh, Jody and Kathy about keeping. The charm of the historic district and, in my opinion. Which is not professional or uh, architecture, uh, landscape architecture, but the. Just leveling and repairing the current historic stones to be. And level as they can, which may not be perfect, but. Close enough so they're not major tripping hazards. To me, that would be. What looks like the best option. I just wanted to.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then, I think Susan and, or John, either you had your hands about, I, I didn't see who was first, so.
Sure, yeah, I mean, I was just gonna say, we had a conversation, we, we, I, I think one of the things that was, for them, one of the things we, we pretty much were. As a commission, we were strongly against was the, the adjacent carriage road walkway for some of the reasons of maintenance and. What does that look like and, and separate pretty cool kinds of things, which is a thing. Um, so when we talk about accessibility, we're not talking about, you know, jogging paths and things that are, you know, we're asking for. People in wheelchairs or people who have vision impairments or people with disabilities to be able to traverse the green in a way that is safe. For them, so I just want to be very clear about that. I understand there's traffic issues and. Drive in the wrong way and things like that, and, and that's unfortunate, and some of the ways they designed the roads and that's a state issue, I guess not ours. I have my focus on the actual, the, the walking parts of, so you know, I do agree with Brandon, I think Susan mentioned it too. You know, we're all for. Whatever is, moves in that direction, whether it's a progressive process or, or starting somewhere or. Involve fixing, fixing what already exists, because. You know, I don't think anybody here said that we hate history. Um, but we just want people to be able to enjoy it and, you know, honor the, the history of the town, but also. Make it, continue to make things more accessible and for the future, which is not yet history, but we'll get some.
Your place. You had your.
Yeah, um, so I, I, again, just echoing, I think we're, we're all. We're all in agreement, believe it or not, you know. Coming to you, um, we haven't talked about it with the other, with the historic commission, but you know, before coming here, my thought was. You know, the, the maximum impact for it with physical limitations, visual impairments would be the reset. Um, with the minimal impact to the historic significance, so you know, that's just making the most sense to me. Now, I'm glad to hear that the historic commission feels something similar, and hopefully we can move forward in that direction.
And then I have one more question, I see Kathy, Counselor Lubin, I should reading. Scott or possibly Kathy, would you know from your experience, when was the last time we reset any of these stones? I think that's a, that's a good question, obviously, you know, it sounded like from Joey's, it's every thirty to fifty years, you might need to do it. Um, how, how, when was the last time we did it as a, as a community, or if anyone privately did it in the past few decades?
Scott, I, I don't know if you remember ever doing it. I know it's been done since I've been in town. I've been in town forty-five years.
And Scott, do you have any historic knowledge?
Twenty-two years.
Twenty-two?
Thirty-seven, I don't, yeah, I don't remember it, I've been here thirty-seven, so.
There you go, you, you're getting it between thirty-seven and forty-five, and I'm guessing. I'm guessing it was probably in the eighties. The nineteen eighties.
They, they tried to move the stones to protect them over by the church.
But when, when I saw them doing it, they started at the town hall and I watched it, and they were flipping them. And they, they weren't doing, I mean, they were, it was the town crew who did it, and they were lifting them just on their side. Putting stone dust under and laying them back down one at a time, coming down the green. And I do know that there are a couple at the church that, and, and they were. I don't know, there were people at the church messing with them, and I was like, I, I was appalled, and I know that there was an issue there.
Thank you, Kathy, this is a quick follow-up. I think Scott, you mentioned, so all the questions I should, I shared with you and you responded to that, a private group. Would be able to do that, I don't know if you or Bill would be able to answer. Do, are we aware of any groups or companies in town that would be able, or not even in the state or region? That we'd be able to contract you this resetting process that would be able to guarantee. His integrity of those steps for those pieces of stone.
I, I know that earthworks landscaping. Does this, can they guarantee the integrity of every stone? I don't know. I mean, you'd have to talk with them. I'm sure if you talk with some of the landscaping people that they would. I mean, they, I know that I talked, they knew that we were having these meetings and they said, we would talk to them. I mean, that was just one of those off-the-cuff comments, and I would be happy to have, um. Uh, good, uh, Rob Simons be in touch with you if you'd like.
And, and there are still masons and specialized and historic. Um, properties and historic, um.
So then, actually, sorry, um, I'm forgetting your name, my apologies.
Oh, that's, that's fine. Michael McGee. As um, as a member of the historic district commission and also having lived on the range since two thousand and one. I I just wanted to second the notion or, you know, echo the notion that. As much as possible, I can get makes sense just resource wise and. Uh, common sense wise and historically to reset the stones as best as possible. And obviously, there's going to be areas maybe that need something more than that, but but overall, if that can be. More or less the uh, the approach, it just seems like the least uh, the least impact and the most pleasing aesthetically. And what I would vote for, if there was an actual vote.
Okay, no, thank you. Um, so then I think it was Councilor Luba and Rachel Reagan, but we'll get down and go first, it's the other chance, yeah.
Agreed. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So when I went over these different options, the one that seemed to make the most sense to me is to repair what's there, right? And I think what I'm hearing is agreed from both commissions. But my question, uh, I guess probably for you, Scott, is one of the cons listed here is it has to be maintained. Uh, surface will be softened and regular, irregular, not maintain. What's that gonna look like for the V W? Because it says. Uh, raked, it has to be raked and compacted, but we're talking about leveling these stones, so I don't know, do you know what the maintenance will look like for that?
Yeah, I, it's gentleman just left to put that report together, but I think that section we just had got and based it on the wrong.
Well, they do put stone dust under the historic stone.
Right.
And then they need to be edged badly. I mean, you could see it in several of the pictures. I mean, some of them. If there's a driveway, you can see that the stones are probably forty-two inches wide and then you jump into somebody's private property and there's at least, you know. Oh, six to eight inches of grass covering them on both sides. So I think a lot of them are a lot wider than they appear to be.
Yeah, that was actually just to bounce back. Tell me if your question, that was one that I kind of asked and Scott wrote in freshman year's answer is that. Not only the resetting that whole project, but even the general maintenance, we'd wanna contract with some specialists to do that on a regular basis.
Right. And I also thought I remembered discussions, you know, months ago, whenever we talked about this thing, that this wasn't really an option because some of the stones were in such bad shape. What happened to that? Uh, is is that not the case or?
I've walked that sidewalk, I don't know how many times. There are some that are broken. You know, they're they're still sitting there, we can see the cracks in them. So they, but I really have to take a lot of care when they, when they move those and get them back as tight as they can. My concern is anybody who wants, there are stones where there's more than. The maximum deviation within the stone itself, not that it's not level, just that it can go, then it drops and it's. You know, so somebody who's um visually impaired using a cane or whatever, there's still still gonna be a. A trip hazard that are putting.
Right. So is there a certain confidence level that these things from from both commissions, that these stones can be leveled out? So issues like that won't come up? You just, you feel like they, if these are repaired, if you feel confident in respect that they can be. Usable for people with disabilities and not, you know, i- if it's done and then saying, well, this isn't really what we want because there's still tripping hazards there. Um, I just don't know what it will look like when the part is done, if that's the way it goes.
There was, when Heidi was here, she walked the green with you and she, and every stone you numbered.
Yes.
And I was wondering where that data is, because every stone is numbered, every single problem area is highlighted. Um, and I know you spent a lot of time doing it because I used to see you and be the way and come down and watch you and drink water. So it's hot, but um, so there is a document. It's probably in the planner's office. Yeah, so that would be pretty beneficial.
Yeah, that's the first I've heard of this all.
Um, and that shows, and a lot of the the stones that are broken are from people parking them. Honestly, the ones in front of the church was from when they were doing some people work a long time ago. I believe a couple of them got broken. I know one of them got.
Um, and and I think you'd have to look at them and I'd like to see the document that you're referring to because I, I mean, I think that's a, Jody, that's a good point. There are going to be a couple that may not be deep enough to satisfy the council that will have to be replaced. Um, and a couple, if you look at them, are in three pieces or four pieces that have always been reset. Because they're historic and maybe it's time to say, look, it's in too many pieces. We've gotta stop resetting this one and just replace it. And those four pieces become a part of somebody's stone wall in the park at the Crandles or something. But I think we need to, you know, be practical about some of those pieces, but by and large. Um, I think that, you know, the surface is is granite in most cases and to Mr. Lubas' question. Um, it, I I said that from the very beginning, they're granite, so you're not gonna have a smooth marble finish. Um. On any of them. But I think that the um, um, document that we have, you have in your hands, talks about the deviation that's allowed. I don't think you're gonna find any of those stones that are too far off from that. The allowable deviation from stone to stone on any given stone. I don't think it deviates that much. I don't remember when I walked that walk that is that different.
Well, we're allowed what, a half inch, right? And I, when. And when. Cause they said it's like a threshold.
I don't think any of them are that significant at all on any given stone. I I'm.
Ever when Walter Combs was part of your commission, the disabilities, he mentioned that, yeah, Walter Combs. And they have a masonry tool sometimes that you can just smooth it off edge or something where, you know, if Ron is going with cocaine or something. And it gets stuck, you know, we don't, we, of course, we'd want that, but you can smooth or level, level a sharp edge.
They have diamond, diamond and wheels that could run.
Then you're messing with the integrity of the stump.
Yeah, and you threaten, you know, then you maybe get into cracks if it's the, the stone isn't thick enough, but I don't think you're gonna find that necessary. I think you'll find that the stones, the old stones are in pretty good shape.
Yeah, I mean, for myself, I have zero vision, but I, it it, a surface does not have to be perfectly smooth for me. It just can't have a, like a, you know, upheaval.
Right.
Walk right into the raised area.
Rand- Miranda, if I'm not mistaken, wasn't one of the issues that you were having was where the tree roots were lifting that sidewalk right up?
On, and if, what I remember is that, but it was on the, yeah, like near the hicks, means on that side.
Yeah, that's where I remember there being a real problem and I could picture that, that would just be, that would be hard on anybody. I mean.
Yeah, definitely.
Eighty-eight Talon Green. I think it's eighty-eight Talon Green.
Yeah.
Just pulling back for a quick moment, I just wanna make sure, I share with you with all sex, I know, I think Councilor Luba and Councilor Mucci on council and. You're checking out questions or comments, so I just wanted to make sure we got, continue the process. So, I think you're.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean. I'm full of questions right now, because I mean, we're saying that. You know, the main thing is if we wanna try and reset the stones, is keeping the structural integrity of these stones. So let's say that during the process, stones break or some stones break. Then the question comes, what are we gonna replace it with? What is a historic district gonna look for as far as to keep the historic value? As far as replacement stones. And if that's what you're looking for in replacement stones, given the section that we're looking at. Rather than trying to pay somebody to come in, try and balance them, try and get everything else. Having a whole new thing, I mean, not that I'm looking to spend money. But having like, you know, because it's gonna be, if we're gonna dig these stones up, we're gonna try and balance them and try and get them perfect because they're, I mean. I I'm sorry, there's, there's a lot of stones that are not, that you're never gonna get to mesh up perfectly and you're not gonna, I mean, there's concerns that I have about, you know. About them being safe and about them being usable. And I'm not talking about people jogging on them, I'm talking about people walking on them, people using wheelchairs on them, people that may have other, other impairments that are using these. Where if, say like, you know, that they try and move the stones and out of the stones twenty of them break. What are we gonna replace them with? What would be the demand that we replace them with? What about the ones that are already broken? Because I'm counting right now, just from what the pictures are. Probably ten or fifteen stones that are, are in rough positions. So what are we looking at for that? Because if we, if, you know, if it's not gonna match. And it's not gonna be, you know, a, a match that people are gonna be happy with, then why are we doing this? I mean, that's what I, I, I'm sorry, I'm gonna be the nuts and bolts person here. I I'm like, you know, I gotta see the granularity of this. And I mean, we're trying to make something fit when. Why are we trying to make it fit? I understand the historical value, but there's a lot of other ways that we could do it. And just for historical value, that on the opposite side for the carriage road, there's no match. There's no match whatsoever. You have granite, then you have asphalt, then you have concrete. I mean, if. If we, if that's not, I mean, that's probably the most important section, one of the most important sections, because that's right there in front of the, up front of these several different museums. And if that's not historically accurate, then why are we really arguing about keeping everything historically accurate? If it's obviously, I mean, it it doesn't seem like anyone's really too concerned about that section. Then let's take a look at the real, at the, at the real issue here. Let's try and get something that as close to possible as what we could do. With a reasonable cost, you know, so that we get something that we would, you know, that could be bluestone or be something else that would be. Essentially historically accurate, without the actual historically accurate stones. That would be more functional and more usable for people. I think that was something that could fit everybody's need. You can get something that comes in, lays it out level, match it like it was, maybe say historical. You know, view that we wanna have, because I mean, I know growing up in Buffalo, you know, we have Frank Lloyd Wright's house there. We had a bunch of different architectural things there. That there, we have concrete sidewalks in front of these incredible historical things. And that people are still going there. The walkways are a nice addition, but I don't think it's crucial to keeping it, the historical value of these houses, of the green. People come to the green because they wanna see the green, they wanna see the houses, they wanna see the museums. They would want, they don't wanna see the sidewalks. The sidewalks are added, not a, I'm going, I'm going there to look at the sidewalks. I I have yet to hear anybody say that.
Yeah, well, I think they.
I I'm, I'm sorry, you know, I I, and so I guess, I I guess I'm asking for the historical district. If these stones break, what are you looking for us to replace them?
I think people come to the green, to Talon's Historic District for the experience. They can't come to the houses because they're private residences, so they come for the overall experience. That's why the people paid privately to replace the antique lamps. That's why people opposed making the road wider and and making it faster because they wanted to get narrower and slower. They wanted to keep it a neighborhood, not make it just a connector from the north end of town to the highway. There were reasons they wanted to keep the ambiance of an, of a, an experience as well as a neighborhood. It wasn't just being historic, it was, it was the whole reason for that. The ex, the, the whole historic. Jewel. I'm losing my, my thought here, um, to kind of respond to Lou. You bring up an excellent point. Yes, there, there will maybe be some broken stones. There is one in front of the church that I'm concerned with. Because it's gonna be three pieces that are gonna be tough to, I mean, it's a puzzle. You're gonna put them back together. Should it be replaced? I don't know. Um, I would, I could go either way on it. They're taking up space. You're gonna lift it, put some stone dust under it and put them back down again. In some cases, they're not gonna need to be lifted at all. So, I mean, are we worrying about six stones? Are we worrying about fifteen? You see stones that are in two pieces in the, in the pictures that I'm looking at, but they're gonna go back in two pieces. Because you don't need to replace them. They just need to be reset because the turf around them has risen over time. And as people keep dressing their lawns and the turf gets higher, um. What happens is, we keep saying, well, we'll give up a little of this and we'll give up a little of that and not, pretty soon, there's nothing left. And other historic districts have become, um, and they're one of the not historic anymore and they've become blight. They become blighted and I've talked to people in those districts who now are looking just for kind of money because. They just need landlords to run the buildings and they become rooming houses. And Talon's Green could very easily, with its proximity to the highway and its proximity to our commercial district. Could very easily become just that. So we'd have to be awfully careful if we're gonna continue to keep it the way it is now. We've lost a lot over the years. We have to be careful how much more we're willing to give up.
Yeah, I think that, building on what you're saying, that could happen anyway. I mean, that if somebody buys one of these buildings and they wanna turn it into a, into a, you know, a, you know, a targeted building or something else. You know, what rate do we have? I mean, that, that, that's something that every town has faced and I think that, I don't think that the sidewalks are gonna be the crucial part of it. I mean, I understand what you're saying, but at the same time, I'm trying to rationalize this. And again, I'm asking the point, and I'm being very serious about the question, if these stones break, what are we gonna replace it with? What are you looking for us to replace with? So that we can know, so that the people that are gonna be possibly doing the work understand. So that we, so that we can, so that we can know what you're looking for. Because if it's gonna be something that you're gonna replace with bluestone, then why not replace it all with bluestone? Why not do something like that?
I think we need to then have a conversation with the council about what's the budget? Do we, do we source the stone from the, from the east side to fix the west side and just replace the um. Carriage road with um, in-road walkway? I mean, what is, what are you, what is your thinking? I mean, I think we need to take this to the next step. Is that where you wanna go? Um.
I mean, you're bringing up these issues and I'm asking you the questions for them. I mean, I understand.
Replace the stone, I think concrete is gonna go back in front of Hicks if you wanna maintain the Hicks's, you know, story. Um, in front of the Hicks Memorial Building, in front of the Hicks Museum, their story was, eh, you know, we wanna do concrete. So maybe is that what you wanna continue with that piece of history in front of those two buildings? Batuminous obviously is gonna go away. I think that looks stupid. That's certainly not historic. Um. We've replaced the stone where we can. I think we need to price out what's, what the price of either stone, whether it's granite. And the quality of it and as well as um, bluestone. But I, I would have to talk to whomever you hire as a contractor, wouldn't you think, and get a price?
Again, we're sort of putting, we're putting the cart before the horse.
But you're asking the question, and so I'm trying to give you an answer. I I mean, you're, you're putting me in a tough bind here.
Well, I I I understand, but I guess, you know, it's a, the whole thing, the whole reason why we're trying to have this conversation is. That we wanna keep historic value of the green.
Yes.
But how, they go, I'm trying to find, okay, if these things happen. And that some of the stones during this process where if you decide that's how we wanna proceed.
Yes.
And we want to, you know, either lift and balance these stones and some will break because if they're three hundred years old. And they've been walked on and there's other things, they're gonna be fragile no matter what. That then if they break, what is the alternative? And is that a better thing for us to look at? As far as if you, if they break, are you gonna look for granite to replace that or are you gonna be looking for other things? So that we can sort of say, hey, maybe this is the better course of, of, you know. I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Chair, I know I'm going, I'm taking.
You know, we're talking about granite. Um, I think the Washington Memorial is granite. I know that there are a lot of the memorials and and mostly historic places I know and buildings in New York City are granite. Many of them are as old as two and three hundred years old. They're in pretty good shape. I'm not thinking that you're gonna have many stones broken as you do this process. You're gonna be dealing with a couple of stones that are broken because they weren't real heavy and real thick. So um, I, I think that we're probably worrying about something that isn't as big of a worry as we're making it out to be. Are there some broken stones right now because some trucks have driven on them? Yeah. Are we gonna break a whole lot of them as we go through this process? Granted, it's not that brittle. It's not a brittle stone, so I'm not. I'm not worried about breaking a lot of stones because we're not hiring a bunch of Boy Scouts to do this as an Eagle project. We're talking about hiring some professionals. So um, but and I'm, I'm this, I, I'm gonna defer to the chair to move the meeting along. Because I think we're taking up a lot of time on this topic right now, but because I think there are other people had questions, but and and we can look into this more. Because I don't wanna cut you short on this, okay, Lou? I just, I don't have much more information on it.
Okay.
So, sorry, I have to make sure you're going first. I know Councilor, Councilor Nucci, I want to go next, I think Councilor, you help me here. I wish I make sure people are getting the flow because they've been waiting for a while to ask questions, so. I just wanna make sure unless, unless it's like a quick thing, I just wanna make sure we're being fair to everybody.
Um, okay, so a couple of things for me here. One, I think it is of the utmost importance that the green be accessible. Across the board. People should be able to walk down the green regardless of ability. Um, my questions, and where I'm kind of going with this, first, I want to agree with Kathy one hundred percent about the convoluted nature of the pedestrian walkway over by the jail. When they did that road over there, they took away the crosswalk that went directly across the street and having people go like this to go like this, to go like this, to go like this, to go like this. I'm one of the idiots who, I don't know, just say I've been here too long. I just walk across the damn street. And I'm doing it like, and I'm walking up over curbs. So, you know, it's that whole area there is an absolute nightmare. And I don't know if there's anything that we can possibly do about that part. My other concern here is I'm looking at this and a couple of things. I'm glad we finally got everybody in the room to come to an agreement that, you know, we can look at repair and right, you know, like somehow keeping the stone that's there, but making it repaired, um, to the point that it's accessible to everybody. So my concern with that is, um, Scott, is there any part of, well, first of all, the dollar amount that's in this, is this format here that the guy left from said anywhere between a hundred and fifty, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to do that project with no real detail behind it. So my question is, um, is there anything, understanding the sensitivity with the stones there that the town staff can do outside of this hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty thousand dollar project to, to do it? Is this stuff that your guys can do part of it? Not even not all of it, but part of it to help with that cost?
It's, it's not that I'm doubting the ability of our staff. But knowing the sensitivity of this issue, I wouldn't be hard pressed to let them do anything other than going down along the sides and removing the gold up road, which would help the, you know, minimize your modern work to contract.
Okay, because I'm, I'm concerned that, you know, this might be something that we could use the staff to do for, from the perspective of public works and what their, what their kind of role and everything is. And that gets me to the, the repair and maintain piece of this. So I walked down the walkway intentionally on my way here again. I've walked it quite a few times. I walked it with the mission. I walked it when we did the joint thing and that. And I really think we have two different entities here. We've got two different sides of the road, one of which is just a hot pot of what everybody could throw together to get from one place to the next. There is no congruent material on the carriage roadside of the green at all. So I think that gives us a little bit more leeway in what we think we can do there. But on this side, my concern is, I know we're saying that there's not a lot, but there's a lot of stones out there that are broken. Like I was walking down one of these one that's like four pieces. Like I, I don't know, I'm pretty good at puzzles and all, but I don't see it lifting that, putting anything underneath it and being able to put it back together. So in that case, I understand what Lou is saying, is the assumption in this one fifty and one eighty that we're going and getting some sort of historical stone to fix that? Or are we just going with a stone that is comparable in nature, but not three hundred years old? So then I don't know if anybody knows that.
I think is, we had to replace one in front of the congregational church. I know Kathy Bach, there was a quarry that has a similar shade, we'll say, and style. And I don't know if the, I'm sure the quarry's been there for three hundred years, but I don't know.
I don't know what that specific rock is.
But you know, there's ways to make things look old, like when they did this, when they did this reconfiguration originally, we had asked them to put the rough side of the curb out to make it look weathered instead of the straight edge, sharp side. And that's what I was told they were going to do. And then when I saw him put the sharp side out, I'm like, hold it, wait. And they're like, oh no, this is what we're doing. And they just didn't listen to anybody. But just that, that was one of the options that we have talked about. So there are ways to make it look a little weathered.
Okay, so we would be using just whatever stone we can get for replacement with quarry that is comparable to the stone that is already there.
Right.
Okay, so that's, that's one good thing because I do think there are a lot of stones there. Like just even just looking at the pictures that we have here, there's four roads that are all broken.
Yeah, maybe like a dozen or fifteen out of two hundred. So really, I mean, and not all of them need to be leveled.
Well, and that's, that's my, my next question here is really, um, Scott, from the, we keep saying that we're just going to pick these up and throw some stone dust underneath it and put them back down. And I'm concerned that that may be like the, you know, the Jerry rig way to kind of do this. Like, should we be looking at leveling, putting in trapped rock underneath it, something that's going to be able to maintain more even hull from the weather and everything else, rather than just lifting it up and throwing some stone dust underneath it and then?
Well, you can increase the scope of the project considerably. If you got every, every rock you go over, if you're going to dig it out and put it in the, you know, free draining base and then, you know, the stone dust, sand. Years ago, people used to do payers, stone dust was the final course, then you save your paper. They've moved away from that now. Stone dust, then you put sand on top, you put the sand, you can.
It moved. Yes.
Um, so I would recommend probably a two-inch bed of mason sand, something with no stone. It's just pure like neat sand.
Okay.
So as you try to get these things level, you can just kind of wiggle the place. But again, that's, um, tedious task, you know, it's, it's more in line with the stone mason. Again, I'm not doubting the ability by guys that like, we listen and say, oh, he doesn't think we can do it. That's not the case, but we have numerous fall fields and things of that nature and weed whacking and cemetery is, we just, you know, it's not the time of the day right now that might tag on a project like this.
Okay, um, so I, I don't know if there's any way for us to get details on what built up this, well, from the one fifty to one eighty and what kind of work we would think would be in there. Um, honestly, it's within the, the range that I was looking at from the, the solutions on here. Definitely did not, just like the, the new stone dust thrown on the side of it at all. So it's within range, but I just want to make sure that when we're doing this, where we know exactly how many stones we have to replace, we build a contingency on the ones that are going to break. And then if we're not lifting up every stone to make them level, what is the price of this project look like? And more importantly, how do we bring some kind of congruent nature to the carriage um, roadside of the green? Because it's a big mess over there. Um, and then my other concern is, we have like a crosswalk to nowhere that the state put over here, that would make traversing the whole, like, make a lot of this a non-issue. If we actually had a connector from the carriage drive to the corner and then from the corner over to the house. So where the post office is, you could actually have accessibility across that area there, um, which we don't have right now because we've got a crosswalk that literally depends on the grass. It doesn't, it can go anywhere. And I do think, um, I don't know if it's included in this or not, but we do need to consider the, um, the non-marked crosswalk that's over by St. Matt. It's a crosswalk with no signage. There's nothing there to say, hey, don't hit the person walking in the road. So I don't, again, I, I think we need, if we decide that we're going to go down, repair the stone off to make it accessible, we need to flesh out this one fifty to one eighty. We need to get the, the documentation on what the stone replacement will be. We need an idea of how many stones are going to be replaced. We need to decide if, if that can be mixed, so we can have one set here on Carriage Drive that actually, well, can't say one set. Kathy, don't yell at me. I know. Hicks needs the concrete piece, but the rest of it, there's four different kinds of stuff over there. Some of it is like my driveway, which is eighty million years old, is in better condition. Um, we need to fix that. So I would like to get more detail, flushing out the one fifty to one eighty and what that means. But I don't want to put this off because this is not the second council that has been talking about this. This is my three and a half years. Actually, it's the third council that has talked about this. Every council I have been on has talked about accessibility on the green. And just do it. Let's do something. Let's stop talking about it and just do something. So I want the details.
You may be able to have somebody, you may just be able to have Ruck come in and give you an idea of cost. Like is it even in the ballpark, the number you're looking at? He, he, he's, he's maybe able to just tell you that.
The guy that.
Name I was talking about, the name I gave you. I mean, and I will talk to you off screen if you want. Just, just if, if that would help you in your deliberation, just to say, yeah, I think this, I think that the numbers you're looking at makes sense for the scope you're looking at because he's in the business.
Well, I think we would need to go out the bit for this.
I think we need. No, I, I, I know that, but I, I think you're, you're, you're kind of drawing up the scope of work right now. And I think you, you want to know, are you, you know, is your scope and the numbers you're looking at kind of in the, do you want to know if it's in the ballpark? And I'm just saying, if you want to talk to somebody who's in the business, maybe this would help you. And if you do, talk to me and I will let you know. I'll give you a name, his contact information. Just, he doesn't want to be a bit on your brain.
So there's, replacing those, or I'm sorry, leveling those rocks is a talent. It's not something, nothing against Scott and his men. And it doesn't come cheaply. And then once you pull one and level, now you've got to level them all.
Right.
Um, and so I, I respect the gentleman's opinion at one fifty to one eighty, but we all been, you've watched bids or predictions of prices um, be way off. And I think you open, you pick that, you move that first rock, you've now opened a can of worms to level every single one after that. And that includes a bedding, as Scott had said. So that should be considered. And I would, I would say, as, as you guys said, we need to get some estimations here. And there's several in town. Robbie being one of them, that, that do that type of work, that have been in stone mason reef or there since they left high school.
And I was going to add to this from your perspective, at least the next steps. Obviously tonight's not, it's just discussion. There's no actual decisions or votes being taken. I think we would want to, as we get towards an ultimate decision, want to have our town engineer work with various staff and stakeholders to provide a formal outline, a formal plan of what would take, what the cost would be, who they'd have in the line of perspective, vendors and then have the project executed. Um, and then from the financing side, I don't want to jump in too much. Because then Elisa's here, but I know there was some discussion or commentary way back then about the possibility of ARCA fund or seeking state or federal grants that could be utilized to do this project, especially with historical nature, that that would help offset and use of municipal funds. And Lisa, if you're able to speak to that a little bit.
Shippo, shippo grants, right?
There may be some shippo grants out there. It all depends on what you're doing. And once we have a plan in place of how you wish to proceed, then of course we can apply for those grants, meet with those people. We've already begun to reach out to them on, on the jail and things like that. So we have a relationship.
So tonight, are we going to do a straw poll of which?
I think it's a general understanding. I think it's not an official, like this is, this is going to be it. Because I know that there's some concerns from the public that they want to pass an import right into it from this meeting as to what option they felt was best. Because we're usually having a discussion. If there's a general inclination, you can bring it back. I mean, have a more formal vote at a future meeting just to make sure it's on the record that the council supports one step or another being limits versus just a straw poll. But I know.
Future soon, future?
We can, we can send it in. Well, we'll work. John and I stopped in Brian to get it in for, for July or next meeting. But sorry, I didn't want to figure out if you have any other questions. I know. Okay, so county leader check and I don't know if Congress on.
Amy asked a lot of you here. Sorry, no, don't apologize. There's a question, I agree with Amy and Lou. I'm not sure. But if two commissions or committees seem to be wanting to work together on the adjusted historic walks, I mean, what better can we ask for? Um, the gentleman left.
He's on his way back. We, I, I thank you to Bev and David. I think they've tried to reach out to them and they're on the way back. They should have stepped away for a moment. Because I know, I think John might have had a couple of questions for them, so.
So we talk a lot about costs, but one of the cons in here is just cost. Like, does that just mean the overall cost of what he's given us or additional cost to, you know what I mean? Just kind of that bag, because he doesn't have cost under the other.
I think, at least my interpretation is that it was one of the higher end costs. You know, like if you compare it to the delineated walk area, the stone dust options, they're a little bit more on the higher end, or they're on the lower end compared to the new walks or repair and replace.
I know, because my additional cost like.
I think it's just a higher, higher budget. You know, if we just did the stone dust, you know, it's under, this under six figures potentially versus it's over six figures for the other three options.
Um, and then they just mentioned residents on the green, if they're going to be second offered to residents that have a market in court, are they, are these, what we see tonight, are they going to have something like this? I don't know if there's a list of residents that emails so people know what we're talking about, so they know that could be an option for the residents.
Yeah, that question was asked and I did defer to, um, Lisa and Brian in terms of trying to get clarification on how it was done. And I believe we can replicate that process. Um, after this meeting, to share the minutes, make sure they're aware and encourage and provide input through the town manager's office, that, that circulate to the council. Uh, so that maybe do come to the decision. And also, so the one resident from which now I encourage them to, inform residents to you know, email, the council email, especially when it comes up for an agenda item that they would be notified, you know, getting blast systems that the package would include that topic.
Could they also just papers, mail, mail them? Because not all of them are savvy with the internet. Not all of them are on the e-blast thing. I know I put a post on the Facebook Town and Green Neighborhood.
Yeah.
About this and emailed, personally emailed four residents and one of them happens to be here on the screen. Um, but I think mail would be better, really, because not everybody, and a lot of people don't check their spam. Some people don't even know where the spam boulder is.
That's a, that's a fair point. I think that's something to definitely look into in terms of having multiple means of communication and outreach. And again, all's not too far from the district, so wouldn't be too difficult to get that grassroots outreach.
Yeah, Brian can walk around individually.
Yeah. After your morning.
Yeah. The last communication that we did send out to the group was, didn't they?
We didn't.
Okay. So yeah. What option is available? Yeah.
We, we also have another architect, Thomas Elmore, who Megan had reached out to and I had brushed out before, and he also discussed reliving. So we do have a second opinion on, on this actually. And they talked about phasing it because of the cost. He was saying, you know, if it would be, if it could even be a five-year plan. But that document, so. I, I. As I've, um, I just thought. I know what I was going to say, so I agree with. So I agree with, again, Tammy, I know we should have some sort of timeline, like each month that's on the agenda we talk about or, you know, something. And even if it means our goal is to have this, everything completed and fed it out by like November or something, I, I just, it is exhausting. It's not just this, but other things just kept, to keep, we have, so I just, for the sake of the disability that's hard to work, disability commission is working so hard in the historic district and don't want to present this on to workers on the council, I'm sure.
Yeah. No, thank you. And I agree. It's something that there have been multiple meetings throughout the pandemic about it and joint meetings. It's definitely taken quite a bit of time and then they can, we're, I think we're, we're getting to a very good place to get a lot of consensus here tonight. Really takes a big step in the direction for the town to start using our resources to really get the concrete plan in place and work with staff and write a timeline. Obviously, we need to give them due diligence to, to do that report and have the, the funding available to do so. But I think that's something we can start moving on and have further discussions, uh, you know, throughout the summer.
Yeah, I think we would have funded the resources that we just talked about, yeah.
The fiscal year starts again pretty quickly, so the, the budget, yeah, so the, the budget for the engineering studies will be replenished at that point for Chuck to do that kind of work and provide the town with an official assessment.
Thank you.
But Scott, you have something on that? Sorry. And then I think, maybe Council Con and then Council Murray.
Just as strictly a suggestion.
Yes.
But there is, is nobody better to talk to somebody that does this work. I don't know who Robbie is, whatever, but my past experience, when we replaced all the windows in the town offices that I worked in, we hired custom sash. They had a glass mirror. They did beautiful, old architectural work. They put together a scope of work on what we should do, how we should do it. And they resigned as our consultant the day before the bids were due. And they said, they were able to submit a bid this way. They were not our consultant anymore, so there was no concern. So any collusion or anything like this, but who knows better than what to look for than somebody who does this work? Nothing against an architect or an engineer, but. Nothing against an architect or an engineer, but they're putting it on a plan, a piece of paper. Once you get out into the field and you start finding the, the issues that, you know, problem.
You mean flexibility? Yeah. No, it's okay. Then councillor Con and then I think councillor Murray, your questions.
For the, for the disquiet people for the walkway, I am. I can, I'm gonna follow a question while we are here. Number one, number two, Mr. Luba, as he said. You got shock, you got paved, you're concrete on the other side. They don't wanna talk about it once. And if you break something, I will be, what do you got them, what do you call concrete? So he said, like, what, trying to have a double standard? That's what it seemed like to me, like concrete as well. And all of all, if you dig something, we have to replace it with the story. Why don't we use blue or pink or whatever? Why we make, why that's a big deal? I know it's a history, but like, you're playing what? Any minimum anymore? I don't think so. To me, I think it's a double standard, whatever they're playing with. That's my comment. Thank you. He's back.
Oh, sorry, my God. No worries, no worries.
Now we're gonna start over.
So I this, this issue becomes, I think, difficult because there are potentially conflicting priorities. And I, like, my colleagues are thrilled to hear that we have two groups who have come together with the same request and recommendation. So I think, as has been said before me, this is a great first step, right? Um, I think that there's a lot of charm and wonderful history in our green that we have a community who's advocating very strongly for us to keep that. And part of that overall picture includes the sidewalks. That's, that's what I'm hearing. Uh, I think the idea of reset repair is great. I would suggest that as we consider this, that we ask our wonderful volunteers to maybe prioritize or identify hotspots on a map in a very uh, easy to understand way so that anybody who picks it up can understand where the um, biggest areas of concern, where are areas where uh, there's less concern or maybe even no concern. We like it just the way it is. Um, knowing what the priorities are, I think, would help a lot as we were, would, would, as we work with any vendors to get us some pricing, because I think that might also allow us to phase it. If, you know, we can't get a grant to cover the whole thing, perhaps we wanna prioritize them. For goodness sake, let's prioritize the areas that have the biggest problem as opposed to just picking a random spot on a map. Um, and it also sounds to me like we need to include sidewalk, uh, crosswalks in that consideration. Right? Because, you know, we hear from everyone that the crosswalks are a concern. Crosswalks. Yeah, crosswalks to nowhere don't sound good to me, but um, that's just me. So I think I'm, I'm very happy to hear that we have a lot of consensus. Um, I do hear my colleagues say, well, if we why, why go through the historic exercise if we're gonna end up with nonhistoric outcomes, right? I think that's where, what Sammy and Lou were indicating. And um, some of the things I heard that I just wanted to say again was that uh, some of these stones, if they were to uh, crack, depending on how the crack happens, obviously, um, could be reset even though they're cracked, because there are stones that would still be would still maintain the integrity of the walkway even though they're in more than one piece. So I heard that being said a few times, I, nobody's jumping up and down and saying I'm wrong, so hopefully I'm not. But um, also, I, I think that if there is a small number of stones that do need to be replaced entirely, um, you know, when historic repair happens, sometimes uh, you need to bring in a close replica in order to maintain the integrity of the historic character. And if a small amount of that happens here, I think it's worth going forward on the reset and repair. But I do agree that as we have this evaluated, that needs to be part of the equation.
No, thank you. And I think some of Jody's comments, I think they mentioned there was a document where the pieces were highlighted. It might be if it's depending on how old it is and what they've been able to find. If it's several years old, that can be refreshed and updated. It's actually have those endpoints. I know there was some concern about once you do one, you gotta do every single one, but maybe if there's a set, yeah, like stretch that's high, I mean, we can start working on. And I think that was what Susan said, if you're correct, you're on it. A progressive approach will be taking phase like the most critical areas. If we can make those more accessible over a period of time, we'll, we'll get to a a solution that's, that uses everybody and is actually solving problems. And then I know, so Phil, that's, I know John, you've got a question, if you want.
I did. Phil, um, it seems like we're really kind of focused on repairing what's there. That's what we've been talking most about. Uh, and my question was, I don't know that anybody in this room is really an expert on this, but we're worried about stones breaking as they're lifted up and, and leveled out. I don't know if there are companies out there that this is what they do. Are they confident that they can really make this accessible for people without tripping hazards and they can level these stones out? Cause I don't really know.
Yeah.
Um, and that's, this is really, I think, what we're focused on.
Yep.
Right now.
It's not gonna be perfect. It's gonna be much, much better, right? So the stones are regular, but you won't have, you know, gaps between the chasing stones. You know, the stones themselves, a lot of them are, are a little buried, so, and that's still gonna be there. Um, as far as who does it, you know, I agree with some of those comments earlier that it needs to be a professional and it needs to be a stone mason. It needs to be somebody that works with historic stone. Um, and, and historic structures. So there are people out there that do that. Um, I'd be very selective, um, and do you have to do it? Again, the stones are at, at least a hundred years old. Hundred fifty, fifty-two hundred. Um, so, you know, you don't know, but if someone takes a lot of precautions, I mean, that's why it gets to be very expensive, right?
Um, my concern is just, is going this route and then, and then coming up with something that we don't really want, that, that's not functional. Uh, and more toward, I mean, I, I'm pretty sure it would satisfy the store commission because it's, it's staying the way it is, but I'm not sure about the provision on people with disabilities, because if it's not acceptable for them when the project is done. I just, I just wanna hear somebody with confidence say, yeah, it's what we do, no problem. We can, we can level this out. This is what it's gonna cost.
You know, I think that'd be your next step. And I think someone had mentioned that. If, if you think that's the route to go, then you start talking to some contractors and, and some people that do this every day. Um, and, you know, I'm not sure what their expectations are. I mean, you, you can go out there and look at some of them that are still in pretty good shape. Right? That haven't heaved or sunken or, or shifted. And, and, you know, that's, that's what you're gonna get. Right, right. There's, you know, there won't be big variations in between stones. If that makes sense. I mean, each stone itself, you know, still has some irregularities. But I think you can certainly make it much, much better. Um, it, it's definitely, it's not gonna be as smooth as, as a concrete or asphalt walk, for sure. But, you know, they say take the curse off a little bit. Um, just to set those and level them. I mean, we, we saw some of the images earlier. I mean, some of them are just really bad and really bad shape. Um, those would have to be taken care of first. Yeah, I think it's really just a process. I think you're right. You need to start talking to some, some masons. You know, I, I've seen it done to my to my satisfaction. You know, whether or not it's gonna be to your, your folks' satisfaction, I, I can't say.
Yeah, I'm just worried about, we're, we're not gonna know until it's done. And then, then I just wanna avoid a problem like that.
Well, I mean, you could engage somebody to do fifty feet or just a section, just a sample and, and see what that looks like. I mean, that, that's probably the route to go, I would think. Um, you know, see what the end, end result is gonna be. And again, I think you, I think we got there now and, and look at some, there are some sections that are in pretty good shape, right? That, um, don't have much, um, much that's out of alignment. And, and, you know, that's what it's gonna be. Did that mention?
But I just wanna clarify that the range of prices, was this something that you based off the length of the projects for each one? Was this something that you came up with or was it something that was compared, the like similar projects in either state or other area?
Yeah, similar projects and similar work that we've had done. Um, the range is just, that just out of range, you know, that, you know. As a design professional, I, I can't predict exactly what that cost is gonna be, right?
Yeah, and then let me talk about, obviously inflation right now is, is definitely a factor. So but the engineers and what the architects would come together might be in their cost, but that's, but you're comfortable with that general range?
I think so. It's a very, you know, it's a broad brush. It's a thirty thousand foot lock, um, from what we know. Yeah, it's certainly a starting point.
And Kathy, I think you, you had your hand raised.
I was just gonna mention, I know that the front sidewalk, uh, not the sidewalk in front of, but the sidewalk going to the front of the jail museum, it's rather wide. I think it's about four to five feet wide. It's granite with, um, with garnets in it. That was laid or relayed by the, um, men who were incarcerated in the jail. That's over fifty years old. It's not been reset since then. So you can take a look at what something that was done within over fifty years ago looks like. It's in pretty good shape. We did trim the grass on either side of it, but if you wanna get a sense of something that hasn't been done, touched in fifty years, you can take a look at how that walkway is looking. And if you wanna come and look at my front walk at the house, that's been done about forty years ago. And that's granite again. It's all granite. And I mean, you're welcome to come over sometime, just to see, you, you wanna know what something looks like over a period of time after it's been reset in stone dust. That's granite with garn, with garnish in it that was done here by the quarry up here in Talent. But that's if you, that just gives you an idea of what something looks like after it's been reset.
Thank you, Kathy.
Invitation.
Thank you.
I just have a quick confession, um, and, and terms of trying to get this moving, do something with it, but yet do it in a fiscally responsible way. I don't know that we need to necessarily engage the engineer to look at a plan to do this, to do that. I think we should just find some stone masons, as you're saying, some people that do this, that can come and give us an estimate of what they think it would take, whether it's repair a certain amount of stones or the entire lengthway. Um, just trying to find a way to keep it cost efficient without going through five different new people and looking at the same thing that he just looked at, that we looked at before, that, that Scott and Bev looked at six years ago, you know, just get a mason out here. What's it gonna take? Is, do you recommend all the stones? Do you recommend, you know, some of the stones and give us some kind of idea of what's gonna happen?
I can get a hold of Robbie. Absolutely. Uh, and the Rob Simons is of Earthworks here in town. He's been with the company since he got out of high school, maybe during. He has done work in the west end of Hartford that I have seen while on patrol on, um, equally historic areas with bluestone and granite and, um, all natural stone sidewalks. And you can imagine the west end is a similar vocally about when they changed it. And I've seen Robbie there doing that work. So he's a, he's a good person to enlist, as Kathy suggested.
I think that would be reasonable and we're not making any final decisions. It's just additional study and research based off the discussion. So I think that's a, that's a good step to take. John? Yes.
There is no such thing.
Can a current homeowner on the green pull a sidewalk in front of their house?
So that's a question I couldn't answer. I think I might have asked that at one point, and I think the response was it was a town attorney question, but I don't know if if there's someone in the room that would be able to answer that question. My assumption is if it's private sidewalks, that means the, the owner is in front of that stretch of land between their property line and the other property line, have every right to raise those stones and replace them as they wish.
Glad we're talking about, so the idea of, are we gonna do a project that's gonna be, let's say it worked great? Do I have to have a sidewalk? Can I pull up the sidewalk and try to replace it with concrete?
And I see Jody's hand is up. So I mean, as a resident, you might have a little bit more expertise.
I know that the town again, Stephen Beeching had, uh, because it wasn't in and he was worried about, um, safety for his customers that he did lift a few of them and wickled them out, but they weren't the size of this table or anything. They were like maybe the size of a chair and they were mostly the walkway um, up to his house. So not so much the sidewalk part, but I know, I know he has to, but I mean, some of them are huge, you know, I don't know how many would wanna do it.
That's Susan?
I, I've just done a little bit of research on that. I shared an O L R report from twenty fifteen that, um, listed out financial responsibility for public sidewalks by municipality. And, and it, it's either via butter, the property owner, um, nothing, or the municipality. And Talent is listed as the municipality having financial responsibility. Um, and then, then there's a, if you Google it, so now there's a whole list of, of legal, um, cases um, of who's responsible, who's liable for, you know, an injury or if the sidewalk gets damaged by something the resident does, even if it's on their property. So it's interesting, but I think it is a question for a turn. I have a few of those that I'm sending, that's under Brian, I have a little questions.
Yeah. So, I mean, that was one of the questions I asked you at one point, was liability, why do we do this? Do we have to get permission, you know, when we do this project? If they don't like it, can they say, well, put it back the way it was? Or, or I, I just want, yeah, something else.
Are we gonna try to go back to DOT, try to figure out the crossings, um, their crosswalks, as you say, they're gonna take back to nowhere?
You know, the email address is done.
Or do you think that there's any possibility of them ever DOT changing that? If we're gonna be addressing some of the issues that I, and you've addressed that it's not really safe to try to take your daughter across.
On, in front of the red and white?
Yeah, because they're gonna come out and then it, that other.
Well, it requires like pre-crossings to get across one street.
I don't know. If I'm permitted to speak, I spoke with the DOT and I do have information about that.
I guess, yes, that's okay. I mean, it was really specifically the conversations only, the historic district admission. But if you wanna fight something, but that's, that's okay at this point. I think we're close to wrapping up on this topic.
Okay, it can be very brief. I can just let you know that, um, at the time that the state project was being planned, I was part of the planning meetings and I anticipated that this was going to be a problem, that, that there wasn't going to be a crosswalk between the red and white in the jail. Um, just because I live here and I see the traffic pattern. Um, and so I did go to the, uh, DOT representatives and they did come out and do an additional study in that area. Um, and they determined that due to driver frustration, they would not, uh, be able to put an additional crosswalk there because the current code means that they would have to put an additional stop. And so they weren't going to be able to do a double stop. So, um, just so you know, they did go back to the drawing board about it. It came back and said no. Um, I don't know if there's a possibility of revisiting it, but thank you for letting me chime in.
Well, thank you, Kay. Appreciate the additional context.
I do remember that they were, didn't want a double stop. And I think we even said, well, sometimes when there's like a um, a railroad track, you have a double stop.
Yeah.
And they just kind of, then no. But actually, you could go back to the DOT because I have a memorandum of agreement that we all signed with this road project. That there was stipulations and they were supposed to be working on the stone wall down in front of the um, post office, mentions of historic stone wall. And that was supposed to be completed within five years. And they haven't done anything with that. Thank you for telling me. So that's the, that's the M O A that Steve Warberner signed and I signed and the Federal Highway Association.
Sign her too.
Too, as the Historical Society representative. And, um, I specifically asked Mr. Rosen, when he became chair, if he would honor that M O A. Sorry, I forgot to ask you, Brian.
It's okay.
Um, but that should be something that should be looked at, because that was, for that versus the fact that they did.
Yeah, as long as we're addressing one issue, I think we should try and have a multi-fund approach to accessibility and the appropriateness for the. Yeah, as long as we're addressing one issue, I think we should try and have a multi-fund approach to accessibility and the appropriations from the full area.
Well, I, I was just saying, if you're gonna contact DOT.
Yeah, might as well.
We're gonna change pedestrian law as well with that. We're guessing that when that decision was made, it was pre the new law that when you cross the sidewalk now, you can, as a pedestrian, signal for cars to stop, you know, as well. So maybe they'll revisit it.
It's, it's, if, if we're going to talk about the M O A and that whole intersection, when they come around the curve on seventy four without a stop sign in either direction. That's what's adding to the speed on the green and that's what the neighbors are con- concerned about. And that's why people, even if they visit one museum, they won't cross the street to the other. If they go to the jail or the courthouse, they wanna drive across. Because the cars are coming around the curve on seventy four too fast. So it's, it's, it's all becoming something we need to sit down and talk about. And we've got that M O A and that M O A is gonna expire if we don't get doing something with it.
No, thank you, Kathy. Appreciate that. Are there any other comments or questions from council members, commission people with disabilities or historic districts? I think otherwise, I think we have a good set of, uh, information here. We've got a really robust discussion. Uh, I think we have some direction to give to the town manager's office and various stakeholders in the town side to reach out. We might have some state officials to work with the state agencies that has some responsibilities. So. Uh, just that we have one other item on the agenda, so I just don't wanna cut away off of the switch to that item. And also if anyone would like to leave, we can give you the opportunity because the next item is somewhat related to ADA accessibility, but not entirely. So I just don't want to be stuck here. If you wanna head out after we conclude this discussion.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, if there's no other discussion, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you.
So now we're moving on to item three, which is a consideration of a resolution transfer thirty seven hundred fifty dollars to account contingency. This will be your end lane for the one, twenty minutes to account for a lot of donations, account the one to conservation area to phase three. And I know we have Mr. Ravino, who's the, the conservation forum here tonight, and we kind of a, the lead for the one projects. But I don't know if Ryan, if you wanna add any additional context to that agenda item before we have any discussions.
No, this is just the, um, phase three. Moving forward and it's just such a great spot for so many different reasons. People use it, people who are volunteering. So.
Thank you. And Bob, I see you have your mic muted. Is anything you would like to provide as additional information to the council?
No, I, I think everything, uh, unless you have questions are in your packet. I had prepared a, uh, just a short report. Uh, documenting the, uh, cost proposal to complete phase three. So.
Thank you, Bob. Are there any questions from council members? I'm not seeing any, but I'm just gonna make a quick comment to thank you for the very thorough work. I think every step of the process, when you've requested funds from the town or assistance, I think you. You and, and the commission have not been without in terms of step by step, line by line, getting this, what your budget is and what you need. I think some people, if they saw this in certain levels of town or state or federal government, would be more confident in how, in how we spend some of the money. If they could see exactly where it's being spent, what you're spending it on, even having some of the, you know, contingencies and other funds laid out the way you do. So.
Well, we have a, a good group of volunteers and I think in the preamble, I, I, I said with some pride that. Uh, I think this is one of the best examples of, uh, governmental agency working. Uh, with the private sector or volunteers of, you know, just stretching the taxpayer, uh, taxpayers' dollar. And, uh, I think the results, seeing people using it, it's a special place.
Thank you, Bob. Are there any other questions?
I just wanna say thank you guys for getting this on the agenda so quick. I know I threw it at you with like two days before the agenda was coming out. So thank you for accommodating and getting it on there in time for the end of the fiscal year.
There, there were multiple fronts. Yeah, there are multiple fronts that I appreciate the, the bubbling in, because I think that was something, obviously canceled the meeting, prevented it from being on regular agenda. So. All right. If there's no other discussion, and actually I do wanna thank, obviously Lisa was, I think, I think you're kinda, yeah.
This is my last agenda.
Yeah, this was your last agenda. So I do wanna give kudos to Lisa for all the hard work they did, especially working with the commission and planning department and everybody in town to do, get this done. So. But seeing other discussion, I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution as outlined in the agenda item number three.
So moved.
There a second? Always in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any votes? All right, that is unanimous. Counselor Lu, I didn't make a motion to adjourn it, you know, I P M.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, as unanimous. Thanks everyone. Have a great night.